Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, April 28th. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorney is online? Our city planners present, our city engineer present, along with council member Dunlap, Gady, Tanner, and Lund, and our city administrator. At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is our open forum. This is the portion where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Okay, we will close the open forum and move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, right?
I'd like to bring down item three dot three from the consent. Suppose we can make that five dot one, if that works.
Yep. Okay, anyone else?
With that, I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one, Amber Meadows. I'll turn this over to the city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Summer Gate Development is here. Brian Sullivan is present with this application for here we go. Preliminary plat approval, subdivide approximately seventy-two acres into a hundred and seventy-two single-family lots. With the subdivision application as a request to amend the zoning map to allow for the single-family residential zoning district, facilitating the plat as well as a conditional use permit addressing the lots area and with requirements within the preliminary plat development within a shoreline overlay district and averaging the wetland buffer required around wetlands that did the project. You can see on the screen, the existing conditions in the area on the right with Martin Farms the west fully developed, which had started back in two thousand and six. So the change that has occurred over the last twenty-some years. The property is included in the West Sur District, established by the Conference of Plan and Guided for Low Density Residential Dwellings, which consists of single-family homes. The proposed zoning is R five, single and two-family zoning district consistent with basically the lot standards that exist to the west of Martin Farms. The remaining properties surrounding the site are cultivated fields to the east and some rural residential dwellings, as well as the city-owned wetland property to the north. Further to the south, about three-quarters of a mile is, or exceeding just over a quarter-mile is Seventieth Street, County Road Thirty-Eight. The preliminary plat again is a hundred and seventy-two single-family lots. The R five district requires a minimum lot size of nine thousand square feet and sixty feet in width. But one of the policies adopted with the Conference of Plan in two thousand and twenty-three was encouraging developers to provide a range of lot sizes within their developments to diversify the housing stock, both within the neighborhood itself and the city's overall housing supply. So what they've done is establish a range of lot sizes based on sixty-five feet in width and fifty-five feet width. The requirement in order to allow for this, as prescribed by the Conference of Plan, is that both the average lot area and the median lot area need to be greater than nine thousand square feet, which they are complying with. The developer also provided analysis showing that the shoreline, the lots within the shoreline overlay district comply with density limits established by Minnesota rules. All of the lots comply with the standard setbacks of the R five zoning district, including corner lots and the lots backing up to McAllister Avenue. Stormwater management is provided for through stormwater basins throughout the site that would ensure water quality as well as the rate of discharge from the property is equal to the current rate and does not exceed that. Plat also provides for dedication easements at the perimeter of each lot and over any stormwater drainage areas or wetlands out in the project. One of the items discussed at the Planning Commission when this was presented last week was concerns about traffic from the development. Obviously, there are four connection points between this site and Martin Farms to the west. In order to not direct basically the traffic from all a hundred and seventy-two lots into that neighborhood, the developers required to improve McAllister Avenue from their northmost intersection south to County Road Thirty-Eight. That will be done as a thirty thirty-foot wide street, two travel lanes, the west shoulder. There'll be a curb on the west side of the road, a larger fourteen-foot boulevard and a ten-foot trail to provide connectivity for pedestrians and bicycles as well. The east side of the roadway is left as a rural section, given the character of the cultivated fields, the need for farm access, et cetera. When those properties develop, the shoulder would be added along with curb, boulevard, et cetera. So this is kind of an interim step in completion of this roadway that's designed to go between County Road Thirty-Eight and Nashway Avenue in the future as a minor collector street. Within the plat itself, all the streets are public and meet the city's standard specification of twenty-eight feet in width with a sidewalk on one side. There'll be streetlights provided as per the city code at all intersections, the one end of the one cul-de-sac and blocks longer than nine hundred feet. Street names would also be established in accordance with the Wright County grid pattern. One other comment regarding the streets raised at the Planning Commission is three of the streets from Martin Farms have temporary cul-de-sacs currently. Those were planted or constructed when the development initially was planted with the expectation that they would be extended into this neighborhood when it developed in the future. So the developers required to remove the temporary cul-de-sac, restore the driveway and boulevard portion of the yard within that easement. And they will coordinate that with the affected property owners so that suddenly they're not waking up one morning and their entire front lawn and driveway is missing. So city engineer oversees that process and makes sure that it goes smoothly for the property owners. Park dedication requirements are being met with the proposed preliminary plat through a combination of land dedication and a proportional cash fee. The screen highlights the land that has been acquired by the city surrounding Atsigo Creek and the large wetland complex directly adjacent to it. In the lower right corner, you can see the land that will be acquired by the city as part of this preliminary plat adding to the Greenway Corridor. There's also the ability to provide initial connection from the cul-de-sac within the preliminary plat back to Marquette Avenue. So there is connectivity within the neighborhoods and then out to that trail on McAllister Avenue as well, expanding the city's parking trail system. City staff's recommendation is that the proposed preliminary plat is consistent with the recommendations of the Conference of Plan. The plat further complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on April twenty-first to consider the request for approval in accordance with state law and zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. They voted seven to zero to recommend approval after discussing the two items I raised with regards to traffic in the cul-de-sacs. The recommendation for approval is subject to the fourteen conditions that we've outlined in the findings of fact and decision interback.
Thank you. Does a developer wish to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. My name is Brian Tucker with Summer Gate Development. We're based out of Lakefield. We're a residential land developer. The staff report, as well as Mr. Lick's presentation, really covered the details of the project. The one thing I would say is that at this point, if we're successful this evening with preliminary plat approval, we would look at coming in with the first final phase. It would be kind of the northern tier of lots down to that northernmost access off of McAllister, and then we would improve McAllister down to Seventieth Street as part of the first phase as well. So that's kind of what we're looking at for an initial phase with subsequent phase, you know, within a year or two. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, council questions, comments for either staff or the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Cory.
Um, I just had one. Have you developed any other properties in Atsigo, or is this your first?
I believe Councilmember Tanner that we've not done anything in Atsigo for a while. We've developed in mostly in the south metro. We were working on a project in Rogers now in Cottage Grove and some other places outside of the the south metro. So this will be our first foray into Atsigo area.
Sure, thanks. Has the experience been good with working with the city?
Yes, thus far. I, my past life, I was a city planner for twenty-plus years in the south metro. And so, you know, I certainly understand what you guys see on your side of the table. But working with a number of cities throughout the metro, it does vary quite a bit in terms of ease of working with staff. So I would say this has been an exceptional experience so far.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, right?
Dan, if you could, could you go back to the the street cross-section? Just in case anyone read this incorrectly like I did. There's actually going to be two, both sides of the roads are going to be paved with asphalt. But the east side of the road is just going to have that ditch, like Dan was saying, like a country road kind of standard. Yeah. So both sides will be paved. I read that incorrectly initially that only half of the road would be paved, so. I was glad to see that. That was my mistake. The other question I have, Dan, if we could, I know I kind of sent you a couple of questions ahead of time, so. Some of the lots are not meeting the minimum lot requirements. Can you kind of speak to that a little bit?
Mayor, that was a, the policy that I referenced that is in the Conference of Plan that reflected the more recent patterns of development that Atsigo approved in Hunter Hills, my, the Curdy property, Tanglewood, Dockman Meadows, et cetera, where the city looked at, in essence, providing a range of lot area and lot width, some of which are less than they require sixty feet, nine thousand, in order to provide greater flexibility and housing choices within these neighborhoods and the city's overall housing supply. The criteria put into the policy in the Conference of Plan was that in order to ensure that developments aren't unbalanced in favor of so many smaller lots, less than the minimum, that both the average and the median had to comply with the area requirement. So that we have an equal number of lots, in this case, greater than nine thousand five hundred square feet and less than nine thousand square feet. So it's not skewed towards eight thousand square foot lots with a few large parcels in corners where you can't necessarily maximize the lot configuration, so.
So I'm kind of curious how that works if is it part of the PUD that we do that?
Mayor, it's done with a conditional use permit in this case, so yes.
Okay. And you said we've done that on, did we do that like on the villas for Kittredge? I'm trying to remember.
That one's different because that's a townhouse development.
Okay.
Hunter Hills Prairie Point was done that way. Leave Anna's Acres, the Tanglewood development. Most of the recent ones do that, just reflecting the more contemporary building style. You know, builders want to be able to have a forty-foot wide building pad for their more entry-level products and then the larger pads for the move-up home. So you can kind of see that now in the Prairie Point development. I went through there last week, and the initial homes constructed by the builder there were smaller, split-in tree homes. Now in the north part of the development, where there were some of the larger lots, lot widths, they're building traditional two-story homes.
You could even say that in like Boulder Creek.
Boulder Creek, yep, that was another one that was done that way essentially.
Correct.
Okay. And I know that you said this, but just to confirm, they're all still meeting the setback requirements regardless of the size of their lot. Correct. Okay. That's all I've got.
Any other questions? Ryan, to your point, when, when we were at Planning Commission, I, the way Dan explained it, made it sound like we were just doing the west side of the road.
Okay, so I'm not the only one.
But when you read it, when you read it, it was both sides, so.
There will be two paid traffic lanes.
Yeah, but, but.
On your way home, you don't get your car dirty.
During Planning Commission, you just talked about it being curbed.
Right.
You said on the east side, there'll be no curb so that we can still get tractors into the fields.
And still use the ditch for drainage.
Right.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Cory.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero one, amending the zoning map and approve a preliminary plat and conditional use permit for Amber Meadows, subject to the conditions stated on the findings of fact and decision as presented.
Second. Motion by Cory, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item five point one. Ryan, you pulled that one down?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I just pulled this down so that there could be a separate vote. I oppose the action because our city is able to receive excellent service from our existing contract providers at a price point that is cost-efficient for the taxpayer.
Right.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to pay application number four in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand seven dollars and twenty-one cents for work completed on the fire and emergency services facility project.
Second. Motion by Cory, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. All right, moving on to city council reports and updates. First item is heritage preservation. Cory.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Heritage Preservation Commission met on April eighth and discussed, well, we had a lot of discussion about the old town hall site and possibly documenting the history of that as we felt there's, there isn't really anything out there on the complete history except for what Dan Lick knows. So we've invited him to our next, not that. You were requested. With that, the commission will not be meeting in May, but we'll be meeting in June. I think it's June tenth.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Park and Recreation, Michelle.
Um, so furtherment on a few items such as, you know, we approved the purchase of the paddle ports. So they are procuring those items as well as they are prepping, continuing to prep Carrot's Landing for receiving that stuff. I walked through there just this last weekend. Doesn't look like they're complete, but making progress, it looks like. Also went to the other side, which is, help remind me where you launch, which is, which Nor- 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 Landing went there. And that looks like it's coming along as well. I think they're all done actually on that, that side of the site. So that's pretty cool. And it looks like we are looking at expanding or doing some evaluations on Lily Pond Park, doing some renovations there, some upgrades to that park. So they are just starting to explore those opportunities. Have a little bit of homework to do on or checking out some other parks that they're referring to. But yeah, in the Highlands Park, Highlands of River Point, which is kind of on the south, no, east side of Atsigo.
Yep.
Right along the Crow River and doing some improvements there and partnering once again with our friends of the Mississippi River, which is great.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, Planning Commission, right?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Planning Commission approved Amber Meadows and Zachman Meadows, which we just went through. Commission also approved the Lanko expansion, which will come to the council at a later date. And they discussed the mixed-use M one district, but tabled the decision until more changes could be made. And Dan will keep me honest here, but there will be no Planning Commission next week. And the next meeting is scheduled to occur on Monday, May nineteenth.
Thank you. Okay, public safety, Tina.
Public safety, we met April fifteenth. And just some highlights here. Brian from Alina was available that evening, and Alina as a whole, system-wide, is struggling with staff. Also, of course, are the ambulance are still struggling with staff as well, so. System-wide, Alina is struggling all the way through with staff. Jason was available that evening, and he mentioned that the body cams for Wright County will be here the end of May. The, their new computer system, so they are now on with Oracle. And that is available, but it's not quite yet for them to utilize. And then tomorrow night, we have our meeting, which is April twenty-ninth at six-thirty, which is council and public safety meeting here tomorrow night.
Thank you. All right, we are Sonor City Council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything?
Madam Mayor, just a quick question on that meeting. I know we had talked about it at some point. Is that meeting going to be recorded and made available?
Mayor, typically, the special meetings have not been recorded in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have anything? All right, we will move on to staff reports and updates. Adam.
Mayor, council, thank you. Audit fieldwork started today and is expected to last throughout the week. Council should see a presentation on that in June. I'll be attending the Minnesota City Managers Conference Wednesday through Friday of this week. As a reminder, cleanup day is this Saturday from eight AM to noon at the Public Works Facility. And also, council's been invited to a ribbon-cutting event for Christian Brothers. I did send an email to you earlier today, so. No further updates.
Adam.
Okay. Yep, Cory.
Oh, what, I haven't seen my email yet. What's the date on that?
May thirteenth, and I believe it's at.
Three o'clock? Three o'clock.
I believe that's correct, Mayor.
We have our, our park ribbon cutting too around that time, right?
Yeah, I think that one's later, about six.
May twentieth.
May twentieth at six o'clock, and I think that will be followed up with the Parks and Rec meeting afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah, three, three PM, Cory.
Okay. Thank you.
Audra.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no updates.
Dave?
No updates, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Dan?
Mayor, no further updates.
Rod?
No updates, Mayor.
What? Oh. Nate? Daryl?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to remind you about the meeting tomorrow night, but I've already been taking care of. I will say that we will be at Touchy Truck Event on the thirteenth, so if you'd like to see the new trucks, come on out and take a look at that. Station groundbreaking is May twenty-eighth. There should be a public posting and invitations going out for that soon. And there's a meeting with the, both the architect and the construction management company to deal with some minor issues with the station as far as furnishings and things that will need to be taken care of, so. Any questions?
All the, they did a good job clearing out the lot. Man, it looks different already.
Looks good. We got some wood chips that we can distribute to the residents that are.
Yes, a post went out. Yeah, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason?
Uh, real quick on the body camera. So the physical body cameras will be here at the end of May. Oracle is actually sending some of their developers and their engineers out to us from California. They're going to come up here in the middle of June. I will be in that first group of people that gets issued them and then kind of trial-run them, break them lightly if I'm handling it. I think that's kind of what they want is send it out there and see what works, see what doesn't work and see how it works with the technology that we have and get it up and running with the servers and everything like that. From them building it ground up, I think there's going to be a lot of bugs because I just, I don't, I can't imagine a situation where we don't have a lot of bugs when it comes to that and how much of problems, because cops are really good at finding a way to break things when it comes to the new technology. So I'm glad I can be a part of that first group, get that stuff, so. We had a motor vehicle accident with injuries involving a pedestrian at a roundabout. I kind of am trying to look at that. That was on the twenty-fifth.
It's Friday night.
At Parish in County Route Thirty-Nine, so kind of over by Holiday. I, I'm trying to look at it still with that honest opinion, I guess, where there's a lot of opinions on roundabout still of, you know, was it a sightline issue because of the roundabout or, you know, was the roundabout actually contributing into the minor injuries? In that, again, the types of crashes that we've had at particular that intersection have always kept to minor injuries if we do have injuries or no injuries at all because the speeds are so slow as everybody goes through. So again, the numbers are down as far as the number, number of crashes that happen and the severity of crashes has definitely been lower because of that being a roundabout instead of a traffic light, so. Again, I don't want to say good, because I, there's a pedestrian that was injured. So I'm trying to, like I said, try to figure that out and go, okay, well, is there something else that we can improve, you know, for the pedestrians that are here? Because we do get a lot of pedestrians up there, so. Taking a few, taking a look, a couple of things. We ended up citing a driver there. So if you were to take, take a look at the report, it technically states that we cited the driver that was involved in the crash. We typically do that. It's common for us to recognize if there's a car accident. There's kind of that old phrase that some of the old sheriffs had, there's no such thing as an accident, so to speak. There's probably some contributing factor to it, whether that's inattentive driving or not drew, driving with due care, speed, not yielding, et cetera. So we typically find at least a petty misdemeanor level violation on most crashes. You know, that's, I think, fair to the victims that are in some of these cases where they're just driving along, trying to get home from work, whatever the case is, or in this case, you're just kind of going in between different sidewalks and getting hit by a car, so. Lot to take in there. I don't have a good answer for anything on that, and so it's kind of a up-in-the-air report when I say that. But again, I like to be transparent because I've said a lot of things about roundabouts, and I guess I've been kind of an up-and-down proponent of them, so. Other than that, not a ton of other things that are real specific. I ran some numbers today. So if you look at it, January, February, March, April, I just kind of went back. So this would be the most calls for service that Atsigo's had in those first four months here, so we're just not by a gigantic amount by any means, but we're just kind of creeping up slowly but surely. I think the other, the high was twenty twenty-one previously, and so we just broke that by a hundred or so this year, just our calls for service. So sprinkle in a hundred extra calls over the course of those four months. Obviously not a gigantic gain or increase by any means, but regardless, it sets a record again, so.
Is the pedestrian okay or is that?
It was minor injuries.
Okay, because I was at Coburn's grocery shopping when I came out, so I
Oh, yeah.
seen the ambulance come and
Right.
hoping everyone was okay.
Yep.
I have a question. When it, for the cameras, the body cams and stuff, are you guys going to be posting the footage as your guys' website? How does that work?
No, so if you were to, I mean, if you were to think about it, typically any enforcement action or any interaction with the public, we would be required to have it on. So almost similar to right now, what we have with our dash cameras. There's insane amount, just terabytes and terabytes and terabytes of that information that gets stored into the servers. The only time that that would typically be released is if there's some sort of major event where they feel like they need to immediately release it for whatever the case is, otherwise the retention and the viewing of it would be essentially by request. It's technically public data, so if at any point, for the most, for the most part, you can technically go into the office and request to see some of that. There's different case law as it pertains to that. That dash camera is very public data and that body camera is technically a little bit more private. Obviously, there's a little bit more of that intimate conversations that are going on in the, you know, I'm going inside of somebody's house and essentially showing the condition of somebody's house and everything that's going on there on any call, so. Public data, but it's not going to be, we're just not going to be putting it up for a server and let Public data, but it's not going to be, we're just not going to be putting it up for a server and let people treat it like a Facebook page kind of thing. Or YouTube and just watch whatever they want.
I appreciate that. I thank you for the answer. But good news in regards to reduction in crashes on thirty-nine, and that intersection is so busy all the time, thirty-nine.
Super busy.
Yeah.
And for the longest time, you know, when that was a stoplight, it was. I mean, every year we would have some sort of major crash out there that was. Severe injuries, you know, somebody going through the intersection way too fast, running a red light, whatever the case is. And so we'd have a ton of crashes. And then at least a handful of severe ones every single year. So we've definitely. The number, like I said, I'm, I'm trying to be as unbiased as I possibly can, but I've just looked at the numbers over the years and I, my personal experience there too is I go. You know, like I haven't gotten up to like a major injury crash at that intersection for a long time now.
That's good. Good to hear. Thank you.
All right, does anyone else have anything? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
All right, if no one else has anything, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
I can second. They both seem to fight on this.
Tina can have it.
All right, here. I'm going to go motion by Tina and Michelle seconded, so.
Oh, in here, Michelle.
Yeah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting has ended. Thank you all for attending this evening.